Call the Metropolis City Council Order Monday, December the ninth, two thousand and thirteen. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for applause. Pledge allegiance and remain standing for prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you've given each and every one of us. Be with our community, dear Heavenly Father, as we have had a trying week. Be with the Goins family, dear Heavenly Father, for the loss of a father, a wife, a son, dear Heavenly Father. Be the ones that are overseas, dear Heavenly Father, away from their loved ones in this holiday season. Be with this meeting that each and everything that we conduct here at night will be for the betterment of the community. Be with the ones, dear Heavenly Father, that have sick ones, dear Heavenly Father. Not only be with the sick, be with the caregivers. We ask in that precious name, amen.
Amen.
One other thing on the, before we actually just started. We have a, I'm gonna do everybody a favor. We have Mr. Presine's birthday today, but I'm gonna do him a favor, we're not gonna say it to him. And, but we do wish you a happy birthday and many, many more. That would be the best present we can give if we didn't say it.
I appreciate your, I'll open it with a smile.
Way to go, Rick.
Citizens' request. We need to approve the minutes of the last meeting, which we eleven twenty-five thirteen. We do have a motion, we do have a second. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything under the citizens' request? I don't believe we have any other than just family and friends here right now, so. First item is mayor's report. Motion to accept sponsorship of Superman Classic in amount of ten thousand dollars, amount budget in Parks Department. Sent by Mr. McManus.
Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Carroll. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept the purchase of a transformer for stock for the light department in the amount of five thousand nine fifty from Delta Wyatt.
I'll make that motion second.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Mizel. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept the purchase of storing, it should have been actually building. We're not actually going to be able to buy one that's already put together, so. Storage building, fifty by a hundred and fifty from TrueBuild in the amount of seventy-one thousand dollars. This is a building, I've talked to several of the aldermen about this. We need a building because of the stories that we're going to lose at the old Laylaw site when the purchase of the Friends of Port Massac property goes through. The last thing we actually bid out or quoted for a building was actually a local contractor that then in turn subcontracted it through TrueBuild. And we could have saved a little bit of money by going that way. And I certainly understand that it's a lot of money without going out for true competitive bids. But in the situation that we're in and stuff like that, I would like to move forward this as quick as we can. We just need to discuss it.
Mayor, I'm probably the biggest duck in the puddle not wanting to support it due to it not going out for bids. We discussed that the other day. Not that I don't think the project isn't needed, or not that I don't think that it's something that's a waste of money. It's just I would like to see it out for bids. That's the only reason I'm voting against it.
We don't have a motion, yes, so.
We may not be voting against it, but.
You said there was, you said a contractor.
The last building we actually bid out was the Far Building. And it was put out for bid. It was awarded to a local contractor, which in turn went to TrueBuild and subcontracted it through TrueBuild, which was, you know, so.
Is there any way that we could possibly do that now and run it through TrueBuild again?
They're willing to build it now.
I'm gonna say this is with TrueBuild.
This is TrueBuild.
But I mean, but you said a sub on a fire station.
Yeah, but why would you want, why would you want to go out?
You said that it would save some money, is that good?
Yeah. We put it, several thousands of dollars. They put it out for quote, a local contractor got the low quote, or bid, or what you wanna call it. I think it was quotes.
No, it was bids.
It was a bid. Well, he in turn subcontracted to TrueBuild, so we had to pay a contractor plus TrueBuild, which we could have saved several thousands of dollars.
I missed that note.
And they ought to be able to build it cheaper, but it is a union job, heart prevailing ways. And they have all the bids in the.
I see, I see the proposal. I'll make that motion second.
You know.
I'll make, I'll second that motion, mayor, because they have all the qualifications.
Well, if you remember back when we built the building out at the soccer field. Kind of the same situation, you know, we went to a, we tried every way in the world to get at this and that and something else. And then we ended up with getting a company that specializes in that form. And we made some changes on this building through an error of myself. I said, well, you know, a building forty foot deep and a hundred and fifty foot long would be adequate depth and stuff like that. Mr. Carroll, knowing the length, the trucks and this and that and something else, called my attention to it and said, well, we'd be better off going at least fifty foot. Got to thinking about it. But what I wanted to emphasize, and I wanted everybody to understand, this building out here is not going to be, take the place of the Public Works Building. We're still gonna leave equipment there. It's not feasible to take trucks to UCC and park them and then have to send them in back and forth. It's just, I mean, it's too time consuming. That will be for an overflow storage of what we need to bring from the facility out at the old Laylaw property. That's what that building will be used for is storage.
The conference already there.
A good example will be Chief Massey has went to great deal of trouble to get us some equipment that needs to be in the dry. And I'm referring to the units, electrical units, which we've got one out behind here. They need to be stored in the dry when they're not in use and out of weather.
And with that facility, we can put the generators in the back. We don't use them that often. If we need to store a truck or whatever we need to store in front of it, we'll be perfectly all right to be in the dry. Plus, we have probably ten or twelve storage containers that when we get through at Rookport, those storage containers are ten by twenty. And we can use them to store our small generators and stuff like that in and stuff that need to be in dry. So that cuts the size of the building that we actually have. But anyway, we do have a motion on the floor.
A question, a number, a number two, it says forty by forty, that would then be a fifty by forty, correct?
Yes, I think it all changed but that one, Mr. Carroll called my attention to that. It actually will be fifty foot deep, a hundred and fifty foot long, and sixteen foot tall.
Okay, then it'll be fifty by forty will be enclosed and then the room.
Forty by forty.
You gonna enclose a forty by forty, you gonna have ten foot rooms enclosed?
Fifty by fifty, yeah. Yes, yeah.
Fifty by fifty or fifty by forty?
Fifty by forty, yeah. Where's that off, which one is that?
Number two.
Yeah. It'll be a fifty by forty, right? That's the one we didn't change. All right. And that will be for items that need to be locked up, you know, where everybody's not pilfering through it and stuff like that, so.
Okay, there's also a note that says about five thousand per every ten foot of length added to the building.
If we, if we needed to add to it, when he gave this proposal, if we decided a hundred and fifty foot's not enough, and they wanted, we wanted to go two hundred foot, we could always add to it at that cost.
Right.
But I think this will be adequate, you know.
So we are gonna go with the fifty by a hundred and fifty?
Yes, sir. And that pad out there is at least two hundred and fifty by two hundred. So we got plenty of room if we ever need to, you know, to come on the other side or whatever. I think that'll be adequate, though. We do, is there any other discussion? We do have a motion to purchase a story building, fifty by a hundred and fifty through TrueBuild in the amount of seventy-one thousand dollars. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Next item. Motion to appoint Ron Ashby to the Metropolis Public Library Board, replacing Ludine Wells.
I'll make that motion, mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Carroll and second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept the purchase of a two thousand fourteen Dodge Charger from Lynnwood Motors in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight ninety-seven for the police department.
I don't know if you want to, Jan, if you want him to make it, I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Presine. That was quoting. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Since we got that new car, we need to get Jerry to ride in the back.
Did you feel the love?
I guess you want him tasered or something before you put him in there.
Yeah, that'd be all right.
All right. Next item. Motion to accept training for the chief and a sergeant for the annual.
Five thousand for graphics.
Oh, I'm sorry. The graphics, oh, there's always a catch to every one of them, you know. Motion to accept additional purchases of graphics, lighting, video camera license, title, and installation charges for the two fourteen Dodge Charger in an approximate amount of five thousand dollars. It's kind of like getting one no tires on it.
That's right.
Who made that motion, Mr. Carroll? Then that would be on mark. Yeah.
Near original mark.
All right, we do have a motion by Mr. Carroll and a second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna send them to school. Motion to accept training for the chief and a sergeant for the annual criminal justice summit in the amount of one twenty-five per person for a total of two fifty.
So move.
Mr., go ahead and call a roll on that one. Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'd already sent the agenda out. Mr. Abel may attend that. It's actually a extended education, further education that he needs. He may go along that way, we can keep them on there, but at that price, I'll just send him with a spending cap and go on.
Yeah, so I'll take him the bond money.
I was gonna say, who's gonna keep him?
Well, I'm not going over there, so I guess we'll just have to trust him. Call a roll, please. You already did that.
I started saying watch, thank you.
All right, next item. Motion to approve invoice for tax interruption coverage under our policy with casualty. As you remember, we okayed that a couple of, three weeks ago. We didn't have the quote. Last year, the tax interruption was fifty, twenty thousand dollars. They did reduce it this time to fifteen thousand dollars, so that's an addition to the one we had before. We need a motion.
So move.
Do you have a motion by Mr. Midnight, second by Mr. Mizel? Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
On that, there, it says December first, twelve through twelve, one to thirteen, is that the right policy period? It says right here, but shouldn't that be up through fourteen?
Yeah, it should be fourteen. That probably is off the original thing. I'll make a note of that.
Yeah, but we got the invoice dated twelve fourth.
Yeah.
We didn't talk about that when we just didn't have the price.
They didn't have the price, we didn't want to approve it without the price. I'm gonna cross that out and put twelve thirteen to twelve fourteen. Now I'll call that to Mr. Gower's attention tomorrow. They just pulled the old invoice.
Sure, it's just the time.
Yeah, call a roll, please. You already called a roll. Okay, in good shape then. Next item. Motion to accept pay application number six for Amarin Hendrick contracting in amount of forty-nine thousand three twenty-seven twenty for the combined sewer separation project.
I'll make that one. Mr. Barfield?
Was it Mr. Carroll? Call a roll, please.
Barfield, Carol, Presine, Daughery, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Yes.
I want to again thank the, all the city workers for the job well done for the last three or four days. Mr. Davis, Police Department, for the extra effort. As most of you saw, we actually put the generators in place here at City Hall, Public Works, the Community Center, and had the portable ones on standby. We'll probably, we've got these all hooked up, all we have to do is just start them. We're probably gonna leave those in place for, we may leave them in place for a month or so, you know, maybe a little longer than that. So unfortunately, we still have a lot of secondary streets and stuff like that that there's not much you can do with that, with the ice, you can't hit through them and stuff like that. But I think everything considered, the time spent, and the amount hours, they've done a great job. What, got a lot accomplished today. Had a little bit warmer weather and stuff like that, but I think everything is in pretty good shape. I don't think there's gonna be school again tomorrow, but we had, everything's pretty well cleared. The high school, the college, we now have it in pretty good shape. We need to do a little bit more work down around the elementary school tomorrow. And then we're gonna start on as many of the side roads and stuff like that as we can get to it. So the job well done to everybody that had to do with the emergency and things like that. It was pretty dang cold for them out there working, but job well done. Corporate council report, Mr. Abel.
Thank you, mayor. We need to start, as you see, even the first time, I didn't know, on Friday, we didn't know what the weather was gonna be for sure. So, but we have put the presentation by Economic Development Resources on the agenda concerning the Metropolis US forty-five TIF eligibility study, and then any updates or that they might have on the High twenty-four TIF and business district. Julian Jacklin from EDR is here to make the presentation concerning the US forty-five North TIF eligibility study.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everybody, long time no see. I'm Julian Jacklin of Economic Development Resources. We've been working with the city over the past couple of months to examine the area shown here on the map and its eligibility for inclusion in a new tax increment financing district. I wanted to thank Mr. Abel as well as Mr. Burney for their help with this project, for gathering all the data required to determine the eligibility of this area for tax increment financing. This area is on Highway forty-five, just west of Highway twenty-four. Here's the curb, here's Bullock Lane. This is Burnham's Collision and Toe Center. This is the seven acre vacant lot currently owned by Kennedy Construction. The properties in question, which are outlined in the red boundary, only, the only one currently located within city limits is this one, which is a seven acre parcel owned by Kennedy Construction. These three parcels, the small two right here, and then the larger one, are all currently not located within, within the city limits. In order to be eligible for tax increment financing, all properties within the area must be within the city. Therefore, throughout the timeline of the process to create a new TIF district for these properties, we'll have to move forward with annexing these three properties into the city limits before we adopt the final ordinances creating a TIF. That can be done over the next couple of months as we move forward with creating the plan to create this area as a new TIF district, as long as those three parcels are annexed into the city before the time that we adopt the final ordinances, which right now is projected to be sometime in the end of March. So again, we looked at the area outlined in red for inclusion in a new tax increment financing district. The area in its entirety is seventeen acres. This guy on the right is seven acres, which is our parcel of vacant land. On the west half, it's ten acres, which includes these three parcels. This one's owned by Burnham, these two are also affiliated with Burnham as well. So these three are ten acres in total, this one's seven acres, for a total of seventeen acres and four parcels. The ten acres of improved property right here, we're calling the improved area. In order to find out if it's eligible as a blighted area, in order to be eligible for tax increment financing, you need to look at it in three different ways. It can be eligible as a blighted area, a conservation area, or an economic development area. What we've done in the past with the city's TIF districts is looked at them as a blighted area. You get a little bit more power with what you can do with the money, and I think the findings are a little bit easier to make. But we looked at these three parcels as an improved area to find if they met the criteria to be defined as blighted under the Tax Agreement Financing Act. We also looked at this parcel as well, but for now, we'll just focus on these three, the ten acres of improved. We found that those three parcels were eligible and qualified to meet the blighted area definition because of a combination of factors that were outlined in the state statute. Those factors include deterioration of site improvements. That means that the buildings on site were deteriorated. For those of you that know it, the shop building on the west side is extensively deteriorated. There's a mobile storage trailer behind that building that is also deteriorated. And the build, the main office and garage building is also dented and rusted in places as well. So we found that it was deteriorated. The lack of ventilation, sanitary facilities and lighting. There's a lot of storage of miscellaneous debris and car storage parts on the lot. It's a collision repair center, it used to be an auto salvage center, so there's a lot of storage of automobile parts on site. There's also evidence of burning on site from burning of trash and parts as well closer back to the concrete pad in the rear. We also noticed there were no garbage dumpsters or garbage enclosures on site. Also deleterious land use and layout. The fact that there's the storage of all these auto parts and debris next to existing businesses and residences creates a deleterious land use and layout partnership for this business's effect, or this business's effect on everybody around it, and also a lack of community planning. We found, we went out there at night and used a light meter, we found that it's very dark out there to meet current lighting standards set by national societies. We looked at this parcel on the right as vacant land. It qualified as vacant land because it does not have any commercial, residential, or industrial buildings on the property, and it has not been farmed commercially in the last five years. One main reason why it hasn't been farmed is because it can't be farmed. Reason being is that this is the old site of the drive-in movie theater, which at the time was covered in gravel, and since that time is still covered in a foot or two of gravel, which make it impossible to be farmed. So it was, it qualified as vacant land to be examined as vacant land to see if it met the qual, the criteria as a blighted area. We examined the eligibility of that property as vacant land, and one of the criteria that you can qualify this property to be blighted as is, and I can read it to you verbatim, because we looked at the, for vacant land, it's really, pretty similar to how you find it eligible as an improved area. You can either meet it by a combination of factors, or there's a few factors outlined in the statute that are what we call standalone factors. One of the standalone factors says that the area, which means this guy, because right now, we're examining this as its own area. It is the vacant land. This area consists of an unused or legal disposal site containing earth, stone, building debris, or similar materials that are removed from construction, demolition, excavation, or dredge sites. And in talking with Rick and Chad and a few other parties, we determined that when this property was in its heyday and was at the drive-in movie theater, that there was a bunch of red gravel on site that was excavated from nearby excavation sites. Therefore, meeting the criteria that the area consists of an unused disposal site of that red gravel, since it was there when the drive-in movie theater was in existence and it has yet to be removed. So it's still a unused disposal site of that red gravel material, therefore qualifying this seven acre lot as a blighted area under the statute. So therefore, that this parcel in its entirety qualifies as a, as a blighted area, and then these three parcels also qualify as blighted area, therefore making the whole area outlined in red qualified as a blighted area for use with tax increment financing. The next step from there is we use this eligibility finding and we put it into a redevelopment plan. That plan will be presented to council probably in the next month. That plan will include a list of redevelopment projects of what the city wishes to do with the money that they will be looking to raise with the TIF program. It'll also outline a list of redevelopment project costs of eligible developers that you can use TIF money to pay for, including property assemblies, buying of lots, site preparation, removing all the gravel, demolishing any existing buildings that were, that would be required for the project to occur, rehabilitating existing buildings, so if Burnham wanted to fix up his building, that would be an eligible cost. Cost of construction, public works, or improvements. So if you want to make any improvements to the roadways or the utilities or drainage or anything like that, that would be covered. So that will be the next step of the process. Now that we've found that it's eligible, we are asking that council allow us and authorize us at EDR to move forward with the creation of the plan that will outline those pieces of the required TIF document so that we can create this area as a TIF district.
How, Rick, how will that affect the new search?
Well, it'd be wonderful, because the new search.
It'd be real good.
It's not paying a substantial amount of taxes that'll drive that thing, yeah.
Would it be, if this is approved, then will that be in place?
Would it be, uh, if this is approved, then will that be in place sometime in spring?
It'll be in place by, it'll be in place before they break ground, let's say, more than likely. Even if it's not in place before they break ground, it'll certainly be in place long before it's, they're finished or got the first wall up, okay? So, uh, uh, yeah, it will, we should capture and then add that, uh, into the TIF. But that would generate, and they have not asked for anything, although I, I would expect they'll ask for the usual, like, you know, if they were in, if they were in a, um, one time we were, this property actually, many, many years ago, that the city looked at putting it in an enterprise zone, did all the paperwork, and then just didn't. Uh, but, uh, they would probably look for like five years of tax abatement, or rebate in this case, that's what happens in a TIF, it's a rebate, for eligible, to cover eligible costs, and they'll have some, they've got, they're gonna have engineering costs, they've got land assembly, they got their CON costs, permit, those are permitting type costs that they had to go through. They may ask for the five years, but it's gonna drive for twenty-three years, all the taxes into that one fund. So, uh, it'll be, it'll help us with some infrastructure out there, it'll help Burnham's. If Burnham, uh, I know he's incurring, he's going to be incurring some eligible costs, we already talked about that. And, uh, um, so.
Will we be able to pick up the building he's already built out there?
Uh, is he building a new one or is he just remodeling?
He added on to the back end of that one, is it?
We might, it just depends, I, it kinda comes down to what the, the assessment year will be next year, whenever we finish this, that'll be two thousand fourteen. Uh, so that would be year fourteen payable two thousand fifteen, kinda depends on when and if the successor picks that up. I mean, sometimes they do pick it up fast, sometimes they don't. It may not, it may, it may make it, it may not, I don't know. Uh, but he's got some other costs he's incurring that would likely be eligible for reimbursement. Uh, we've, we've had some specific discussions with him at this point.
I got a question.
It's gonna probably allow for cleanup of all those cars.
He always drive that theater.
A lot of things.
His concession stand and then here.
Yeah, he could still see that.
Yeah, yeah, and then there were several rows, having three foot high for park, park on.
Correct.
That was bulldozed well, that didn't make any difference.
No, 'cause based on, we had a, an affidavit from an old operator of the business, and they certified that the area is still, uh, consists of a bunch of the old red gravel.
My gravel just pushed out level.
Correct, right, yeah. The, uh, the raised ramps were demolished, but the gravel is still there, correct.
Who owns the back half of that ten acres there?
This one?
Yeah.
That, that's Burnham's, it's, the whole property is, is Burnham's corner center. Yeah, it goes all the way back here.
All the way back to there, yeah.
And, uh, some family affiliate also owns these two parcels.
Yeah, that's the way I remembered it.
Yeah, so as Rick mentioned, timing wise, we just wanna be sure that this is adopted before any big projects are to come forward. Um, a big requirement with the TIF is that any project that were to happen on here wouldn't happen without the help of the TIF. So we can't have a project, the ASC come forward and say, "We're gonna build on your property," and the TIF's not there yet, because then when we try and make the findings saying that it wouldn't happen without the TIF, we're kinda screwed.
Yep.
Uh, so a, as far as this project is concerned, uh, we worked it out, uh, just because we also wanna talk about the other TIF and Business District project that we're working on at the same time. Uh, we worked it out, uh, on a schedule so that this project is going to be working on the same timeline as the Interstate North TIF and Business District. That way, from here on out, every presentation, every meeting, every hearing, every joint V board meeting, uh, will be held, uh, with, at the same time. So we'll be having meetings on this TIF at the same time as meetings on the TIF and Business District. That'll eliminate extra meetings, extra hearings, extra trips, extra everything else. So it saves the time, uh, saves the city time and money for sure, um, to have both this TIF and the other TIF and Business District going on the same schedule. Uh, so when I said this TIF will be done by the end of March, that is also the same case with the Interstate North TIF and Business District. With the TIFs, it, you know, it's not really, it's important that we finish this TIF as soon as possible so that we can get those projects going as soon as we create it. Uh, maybe not as important for the Interstate North TIF, but because we're also doing a Business District for the Interstate North TIF, which is this guy. Because we're also doing a Business District for this guy, uh, there's two dates that the state identifies that says if you get all your paperwork into the state before either April one or October one, we will start imposing your additional sales tax on this date. So if we get all of our materials in for this Business District into the state and to the Department of Revenue before April one, they start imposing our tax on July one. So that, that's our, that's our rush on this guy, is that if we get all of our materials in by the end of March, then they will start imposing that additional sales tax, whatever the percentage is gonna be, on all the property within this district by July one. Uh, if we wait until after that, then the sales tax will get pushed back until at least January. So we just wanna be sure that we can have both of the projects going on the same timeline. That way, it saves everybody time, uh, extra meetings, extra trips, uh, and extra costs as well. So from now on, uh, we just presented the eligibility for this TIF. Um, and we already have it scheduled for the next presentation to be the first meeting of next month, which would be the December ninth, uh, no, that's today's date, uh, January thirteenth. Which at that time, we present the TIF redevelopment plan for this district, as well as the TIF redevelopment plan for Interstate North and the Business District plan at the same time. So that's the next time you'll be seeing me. But any questions on the, uh, US forty-five North TIF eligibility, timing, um, let me know.
Pretty good.
Thanks.
That one was a little bit of a challenge, just on that vacant.
Yeah.
But Jim Owens came through, the mayor and Jim Owens, I should say, came through. The mayor, I remember it as a kid, uh, and, and Jim actually operated the drive-in theater. And, uh, so he, he helped out.
My mom and dad ran, ran a restaurant. Right there on that curve. There was a restaurant and a city service gas station. And as a kid, I, I was probably in the fifth grade or something like that, I went to the drive-in theater a lot. Cause I just walked from that, to the restaurant over there.
You done business with Sally Edwards, didn't you?
Miss Stepford.
I learned one interesting story, and that was apparently in the nineteen fifties, Jim said there was a tornado or a big wind that came through, and it blew down everything, the screen and everything, except the marquee. And he was on his way back, saw the marquee, went out, got the letters, and put up Gone With the Wind on the marquee.
Thank you. I'll leave this here as well.
Uh, what we need tonight is a motion, as it says, to accept the eligibility study, place it on file, make it available for the public, and then follow that up with a motion to authorize EDR to proceed with the plan.
Second by Mr. McManus. And second by Mr. Midnight. We do have a motion, we do have a second discussion. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Next item is a motion to authorize EDR to proceed with completion of Metropolis US TIF North redevelopment plan. Second by Mr. McManus. Second by Mr. Midnight. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Now you're thinking, yeah. That will probably go in the, part of what we do, we, when we sit down to do the plan, is we try to look at all the infrastructure running that might be needed, that could, that this would require, just like we did with Harris when they built the hotel, we knew we had to have a substation over here, uh, 'cause we didn't have enough power, we had to do a whole bunch of things. There's a lot of spinoffs you can do when you get the TIF that, that they need. And as Mayor says, they don't have wire, and they don't have, neither of those places are serviced by sewer. So, even though there's the old one, but it's antiquated out front, neither one's serviced by sewer, so, yeah, there's a lot, yeah. Pick us.
It'll be done there off that piece of property, it's gonna be a very good first thing. Well, with the completion of the new project out there on that piece of property, it's going to unreal what it does to that area.
And I'm getting some sense that maybe some property owners at least coming back to Worce Town are thinking about annexing too, if this.
I think they get into that.
Definitely will. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Is that all you had, until the end?
Yeah, we'll probably need to have a committee meeting and talk about, uh, I've gotta sit down and just kinda make it, get, I'll give you something writing that talks about our terms of annexation. We, we have talked to them, they do, are willing to annex, there's some things we'll have to do as a part of that. But, I mean, nothing that's unreasonable, nothing that can't be recovered from the TIF too, so, I mean, it's just things we need to do to make it work.
That's annexing that ten acres.
Yes, sir, that's one of the things we have to do.
Committee reports, finance committee, Mr. Barfield.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The finance committee met on December the third, and we had one item, uh, is on the agenda and two items non-agenda, but I will make a motion on the following. I will make a motion to accept a three-year contract for investor health insurance plan of mutual medical and renew stop loss coverage for this metric for two thousand fourteen, the stop loss per claim deductible of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Carroll. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
And like I said, we did have a very good report.
We did.
About the insurance.
Very good.
Very good report, everyone was pleased. Next, um, two items were not discuss, they were discussed, but not on the agenda per se. I will make a motion to accept the purchase of an ID card printer system for advanced emergency management from dentists in the amount of two thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. The prices don't include installation, training, or support services.
I'll second that, I think that's something this city's needed for many years.
We do have a motion by Mr. Barfield and a second by Mr. Carroll, discussion.
How much does this go up to, you know?
Sure.
Prices does not include installation. What kind of price are you actually talking?
I don't think it was exactly two, right, Keith?
Now, there shouldn't be.
Yes.
What we're shooting for is, uh, the training to be due, like a, uh, go-to-meeting type thing. You know, the, the cost would be insignificant.
But it's well needed, apparently, 'cause you went through the, uh, tornado, the brickwork, they said it's kinda confusing with people coming in and out.
Well, not only that, the, the nice thing about this, if you remember, we had this budgeted last year, and I think we had three thousand dollars in there last year. But when we got ready to make the purchase, we found out that it wouldn't, it wasn't capable of expanding to what we were wanting to do in the future. And what we did with this one, I went in, I found a used unit, I think it had a hundred, maybe a hundred and fifty cards trained through it. So we got, we got an incredible deal on this, this thing for the, the twenty-one, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
I will make a motion to accept the purchase of interoperable reaper with a high price for code and radio communications in the amount of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second. You need to find some company that's a little bit easier to say.
That's what question I was asking.
That's right.
But we don't, we had it right down, that's what it says right there.
That's right. Any questions or a discussion on this?
What's this for?
So it's another item that we had to budgeted last year that was less than what, uh, that, that ended up costing more than what we had budgeted. Uh, it's the, it's an interoperable repeater system. Over the last couple of years, we have had to borrow, uh, repeater system to be used during the encampment so that we could have communications with other agencies, state agencies. Uh, the person that we had borrowed this repeater system from, uh, is no longer works for the state, he now works for FEMA. It wasn't available. Uh, so this, this item, my understanding, the state went through and bought a couple of them, so this is on state bid. Uh, and we're coming in a little bit cheaper than, than what we had originally budgeted. What had happened, just so you'll know, during the tornado, we had a lot of agencies coming in from outside, uh, other locations in the state that don't have our particular channels available to them. A lot of them use the StarCom, the eight hundred megahertz statewide radio system. This repeater is compatible with that statewide radio system, so, um, any responding unit that has that StarCom capability, we can have communications with, without having to borrow a radio from someone.
We do have a motion, we do have a second, call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
That concludes the financial report, Mayor.
Next item, Water, Light, and Street Committee, Mr. Barfield.
Yes, sir, we met in Oxford also, we have two items on this agenda. And I would like to make a motion to accept, the recommendation to accept the low bidder for Crestview and Curtis Square Main Replacement Project from Emirate Contracting Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Mizel. Uh, I would say we, like I said, they had three bidders, uh, Emirate came through and lined orders, uh, I think, what, fifteen thousand, Chad, below the lowest bidder, maybe a little more than that, forty? And a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the other one. And, uh, you know, and they've, uh, so.
Very good pricing, Chris.
Yeah, and they, uh, it, it, it'd just be a good project.
Now, we, uh, Mayor, we're going to, the same, is, uh, the electrical gonna be put in at the same time for vertical, is she gonna go with that?
Yeah, she wants to wait.
She wants to wait.
Yeah.
And I think they're going to lay the conduit.
Right. I don't think she's.
And then just really, all they gotta do is put it in again.
I don't believe so, Mayor, I'll get back to you, but, uh, I think that last moment, because of the locations of where the transformers are gonna need to be was up for debate, we will not be installing the conduit, but I'll get back to you.
Wait, just, you're right. She found a company that could come in and later and bore that cheaper nuclear.
Yes, our lands are moved.
You're right.
The north of Eastman, so that there's room to do that.
And there is room to do it, and that way you're just gonna have the one back there at the same, back at one time.
I believe she said it's cheaper.
It was much cheaper, I don't, so that's a good thing. And you're only gonna tear the, the ground up one time, so. Okay, we do have a motion, and we do have a second, call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
I will make a motion to accept the proposal for resident project representative in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand dollars in construction guidance services, not to exceed three thousand dollars for the Crestview and Curtis Square Main, uh, replacement.
Second. We had a conversation last week with, uh, HM and G and, and Chad and Lindsay and several of them with the company as far as, uh, how we wanted to handle this. To be fair with, uh, HM and G, you know, relatively, they're a, a newer company, the way we do business here in the city, and, uh, through discussion and stuff like that, as far as the oversight, and, uh, I think they have been more than fair of the three thousand dollars to actually oversee that, the inspection and stuff like that. So I do commend them on, on, uh, I think being fair with the city and Metropolis for the supervision of, uh, what it is. I, I do appreciate it.
Chad, will you do the inspecting yourself?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
We do have a motion, we do have a second, any other discussion? Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next items, department heads. Chief Massey. Mr. Davis.
No, sir.
Frank. It's actually going to be a Water, Light, and Street Committee meeting the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Pumps? Pumps?
Chad, you have anything you wanna? Chad, you have anything you wanna?
No, Mayor.
Do you, you have anything else, sir? Old business.
Uh, Mayor, the chief of police has done a good job obtaining his equipment. I'd like to ask him to check to see if he can obtain a slave table. That's a jumper from.
I have one.
You got one?
It's in my office, but it's made out of copper.
You're, you're on the ball, man.
I mean, I have one right now, it's, it's in my office, but I keep it there, Art knows about it, but I, I didn't wanna just leave it out because it's made of copper.
Well, it'll disappear if you lay it out. But I didn't know you had it.
Just see, that's why.
You're on the ball.
So he was afraid you were gonna take it.
I ain't had it, it's out now, Bill.
If it won't be long before, between Keith.
No.
Yes, oh yes. Mr. Morris. And Mr. Massey, if it's a trinket, it could, if it can be obtained from the federal government in some way or fashion, we may have one in stock. And I will say, and I was gonna mention it in my report and I forgot it, our bulldozer is actually in, in Brookport. As we speak, the county, uh, had to take theirs back, so our machine's been down there, I think, a week today. Uh, and, uh, it is operating very well. They about got all the rust knocked off the, the rails and everything, they're gonna charge the C thing and knock that off.
But since you brought that up, I saw some people from Brookport and they wanna thank the city and the workers and the council, especially the mayor for the effort that he's gave giving Brookport.
I don't know for sure, but now John was supposed to have come home today.
I talked to Tom, actually, he didn't say anything about it, but I don't know.
Well, I got a call yesterday from, from, uh, someone in the family, they actually called me Saturday and wondered, said that they were trying to secure transportation from the hospital back here, and the scheduling was to come in today, but now I didn't hear anything about that and Tom didn't know anything about this morning, so. Uh, but anyway, he is doing better.
Now, Mayor, we know if we need to jump on our twenty vote, twenty-four vote system, call the chief of police.
Amen.
Is that a, uh, high track doser? Does, does it look like a triangle tracks?
Pray tonight, maybe you'll get a vision from your daddy, because I haven't got.
I better drive to Brookport.
I haven't got.
It's a D seven, that helps you out.
It's a D seven, but I don't know.
But is it a high track or is it?
No, it's standard D seven military doser.
But that, uh, they said it was, uh, Mr. Souders told me that it was doing a fine job down there, so. This summer, when it gets dry and everything, we may turn that loose out there behind the splits complex.
Turn her loose?
Just turn her loose, and you'll see a lot of trees disappear out there. Old business. New business.
Rest of the one item there, the Public Security and Tourism Commission will be tomorrow at eleven o'clock in the chambers here.
Eleven o'clock.
I've, I've got one item there, it's, out in the hospital dish, I don't know what's doing it, but for the last two weeks, uh, when that generator starts over to the, uh, uh, center across street from me, when it comes on, it's dimming the circuit over on the other side. And I've, I've been keeping the tines down for two weeks and it, it does it about eight thirty-five.
I wonder why the generator would be coming on.
Exactly.
In the morning or at night, Jerry?
In the morning. Over at the dial center comes on. And I don't know, cause that sets on a different circuit.
And I wouldn't know why.
It may just be running a test or something.
Well, it, it, it runs.
Mine comes on once a week.
Yeah, that one does too, it comes on more than that.
Comes on more than once, well, most of them.
I noticed when it comes on, it, for a second, it'll dim, it'll dim the lights, but we see we're on a different circuit. We're on, uh, we're on the, uh, street.
I wouldn't have any idea, we've not got any, uh.
Right. Yeah, you come from behind.
Yeah, yeah.
You come in on that new line that we went underground over there. I don't know, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's showing up on the system.
Yeah, I don't know why, but it, I mean, it's not enough to kick it off, but I've been noticing it.
We check on that on the, uh.
On a skater system.
The skater system will show that, if it's an interruption of just, I mean, just a second, it will show up on there.
Eight, eight thirty.
Some time between eight thirty-five, eight forty, yeah.
Just to check that.
For a day or every day?
No, just, it's, it runs, maybe it's been running about every three days and then it'll drop off a day and maybe.
I wouldn't think that generator would start.
I wouldn't either, because, uh.
Well, most of them will start once a week.
Well, that restarts, that, that one runs at least three, four times a week.
I don't think that's probably it, I don't believe that thing's coming on.
But I don't know what.
Why they'd run.
Maybe something else doing it.
Maybe some, we'll have, we'll have Stoney check it on the skater system.
But, uh, yeah, like I said, but see, I, we're on a different, we're on, yeah, we're, we're on James Drive circuit.
Okay, we, we will check that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, miscellaneous reports. Financial report, payment of salaries, payroll, and contract bills.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Mizel. Second by Mr. Corzine. Call and roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Payment of miscellaneous bills.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it as well.
Motion made by Mr. Mizel, second by Mr. Corzine, call and roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.